And eight o'clock and my seventeen year old daughter was calling to tell me that she'd had a flat tire. She had a test at eight thirty and could I come and get her, please? And I said, honey, normally I do that, but I kind of got this board thing. It's pressing and sure enough. Mom immediately picked up her phone thereafter and it's all good. But that's kind of how my morning has been. So I'd like to welcome everybody here to the September meeting of the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. I'll ask Secretary White to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chairman Pryor. Mr. Ballantyne. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Bullock. Mr. Bryan. Ms. Evans. Mr. Everett. Dr. James. Mr. Cottis. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Turner. And I am present. Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you very much, Secretary White. As Chair of this board, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. There being none, we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Members of the board, we have a number of items on the consent agenda for approval to this meeting. I will read the list now, which includes. Approval of open and closed session minutes of July twenty six, twenty seven, twenty 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 three meeting. Approval of open session minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty three special meeting. Approval of open and closed session minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty three. Meeting ratification of mail ballot, ratification of tier two appointments, designer selections for Caldwell Hall accessibility improvements. North Campus Elevator Modernizations, Academic Affairs Restroom Accessibility Upgrades, Fordham Hall Lab Process, the chilled water system replacement. Lineberger Cancer Research Center Airflow Reduction, the Moorhead Chemistry Lab Renovation Phase Two. And Advanced Spending Planning and Spending Authority for the Pitt Area Stormwater Improvements. The Construction Manager at Risk Selection for the Avery Residence Hall renovation. The land sale to NC DOT that is in Chatham County that we heard about yesterday. Self liquidating debt, the approval of the revised tenure track tenure faculty salary ranges. And approval of revisions to the policy on non-salary and deferred compensation. Having read through the materials just listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or closed session agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all of these items. Any discussion debate? Can I get a second? Thank you, Trustee Jones. Any discussion debate? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. If there is a request to discuss either of the above, okay. I'm now going to give just a few minutes of remarks. Trustee Meekins. And everyone knows that my friend Ralph Meekins, Trustee Meekins, is the senior member of our board. Very, very glad to have you here. But before I begin, I'd like to recognize we have three new trustees. That all have very special talents that they are bringing to this capacity as a trustee. We are very lucky to have all three of them. Patrick Ballantyne was with us all day yesterday and through last night. And had to leave today to attend a wedding in Colorado. So he's not with us this morning. But we're very fortunate to have him on the board as we are with new trustee Jim Blaine. And my neighbor here in Chapel Hill, Jen Evans. And look forward to working with both of you and Patrick as well. So I'd like to begin with a word of gratitude. I'd like to thank the brave men and women of the University Police Department who were here with us today. And all of their colleagues for their hard work and service to this university. This service took on added poignancy on August twenty eighth. I was driving by the end around one fifteen, waiting at the stoplight right out there. And two Chapel Hill police cars went through the intersection. And I then went down and turned on to Macaulay Street. And was headed through the light and saw eight to ten university police cars in front of the Caldwell lab. There's no doubt about who was first at the scene and it was our university police. And in light of this tragic event, I want to do something a little different with my remarks. And that because we're going to hear from Chief James and several members of the university police team. And I want to take just a few minutes to tell you why, like everybody on this board, I love this place so much. Our Vice Chancellor Development, who like several others on the senior leadership team, did not attend Carolina as a student like we all did. But came here in a professional capacity after being at peer institutions. In Mike Andreason's case, Michigan and Oregon. And after a recent fundraising trip, he told me how our donors and alumni feel about Carolina is unique in his development experience. He described it. And I quote, "An almost irrational love of the place." Why is that? Well, all of us on this board know why. The common thread of experience we all share about the friends we made, the classes we took, the great professors we had, and of course, the fun we had. For some of us, the even more fun that we had. That is only part of it for me. After working several years in Washington, I started business, I started a business doing environmental restoration work with a co-founder. I'd been in school here. Along with four other partners of various ages, three of the four had gone to Carolina, six people total, spanning multiple decades, five out of six, all Tar Heels. We set up our company. And Shell Bray put together our operating agreement. Anybody who's been around this university knows the firm and given the crux of our work involved real estate acquisition, very specific pieces of land in rural areas that were almost never for sale. We needed a really good real estate lawyer. And so one day I asked Brack Shell, double Tar Heel, fanatic Carolina basketball fan. For help and he told me that they had the absolute best real estate lawyer in the state, Bill Acock, also a double Tar Heel. If the name sounds familiar, it's because there's a picture of his father out there on the wall. Right out there in that hall, legendary law school professor and former chancellor Bill Acock. Many here know what a great man Chancellor Acock was, and no doubt he was. But so was his son, Bill. Who referred to himself as a dirt lawyer, but he was that and a whole lot more. Over the next twelve years, I spent several days a week talking with Bill about legal particulars of the work he did so exceptionally well, but oftentimes it would stretch into the upcoming game. Or the history of some part of the university. Or the personalities of the personalities of those involved in key events in the history of the university. He knew it all in a very personal way. He literally grew up around it. He was one of the very best teachers I ever had. So after several years of starting a business, doing all the things related to borrowing money, guaranteeing performance bonds. All the things that we did to get up and running. I'm in my office one day and I get a call from a friend I had known at Carolina but had not seen in several years. She'd actually been behind me a few years, but was since, but I had been in school so long that she called up with me towards graduation and we overlapped. She'd just gotten back from a girls' trip with a group of her best Carolina buddies and she thought that I might hit it off with one of them. I then realized, oh no, this was a blind date setup and so of course would be a total waste of time. But I appreciated the thought and I promised I would follow up and take her to dinner. And so I did and showed up at her house two blocks back that way on Kenan Street. And as you likely figured out by now, we of course got married. Did that phone call out of the blue, maybe the Carolina blue, change my life? It did. The real surprise is that our mutual friend did the same thing with three other sets of people, all Tar Heels. So we moved on the other side of Franklin Street, two blocks that away. To a house on Glenn Bernie Street. Where I see Sheriff Blackwood out there and that's when I first met Sheriff Blackwood and his brother Gary, been friends for a long, long time. And we had just closed and the cellar had vacated six months prior. Our yard was a total wreck. I'm dragging limbs and dead shrubs out to the street and see a well dressed man walking towards me. And before I know it, he says, John, is that you? And I responded, Kimball, I can't believe it. You look exactly the same. Sure enough, it was my English eighty-six and English ninety-five X professor, Kimball King, and the X was because that was a drama class in the English department. And as it turns out, we'd bought the house directly across the street from he and his wife Hattie. He immediately invited Joni and me to come over that night for a glass of wine. And that began ten years, some of the happiest times of my life, shared with Hattie and Kimball. Countless dinners, Thanksgivings, cookies left in our mailbox. And when our second child was born, they came over to stay with our then three year old daughter. And I want to thank trustee White and trustee Jones for agreeing to help me create an endowed professorship in honor of Dr. Kimball King. We've just received our first major gift. Mike Andreason's been very helpful on that and we're about to receive another one and I am going to be doing likewise. I must tell a quick story about Kimball. For those that did not know him, he was an unparalleled storyteller. And the house we had bought, every room in it had been painted a different color and it was a really bright kind of shocking color, almost like they'd had a anti-stager come in. And it was really strange. And so that night over that glass of wine. I asked Kimball if he had known the seller. And he kind of paused and said in his inimitable way, she was inordinately strange. He had a delightful sort of like wheezing laugh. So for those of you who don't live in town, let me tell you what life is like living close to campus. On a typical day in the summer, when our children were young, we'd load up the double baby jogger, get our dog Tenny on a leash. And then walk the couple of blocks to campus and head straight for the graduate school. So that Tenny could jump in the fountain out front to cool off. One of the biggest highlights of spring for all of us was when that fountain was turned on. We then continued to the student union and to our final destination Alpine Bagel to get our breakfast. I know Alpine Bagel has been in the news recently and I want to commend the brave actions of the staff there. I've been a customer of Alpine Bagel for a long time and had a lot of bagels there. Over the years, this routine progressed with our children eventually scooting on their scooters in the pit, riding their bikes all over campus. Tenny jumping in the fountain, sometimes she'd get out, sometimes she wouldn't get out. So if it sounds like the university campus was a big playground for all of us, you're exactly right. It was, and it still is to this day. We don't often hear about this or discuss it much publicly, but to me, it is one of the most obvious reasons why this is such a special place. The sheer beauty of our campus. It is truly spectacular and it is something we need to maintain as it is one of the single greatest assets we have at this university. And kudos to the groundskeeping crew who are out there early every morning, working hard to keep it so well maintained and keep it looks so beautiful. So why do I share all of this at my first board meeting as chair? It's because each and every one of us on this board, through our own experience, have a shared love of this university. It's why we are here. It's why we willingly volunteer large amounts of our time. And it's the very reason that I hope will drive us to always do the right thing, not the easy thing when it comes to doing what is in the best interest of this place. Let's resolve to keep Carolina as the leader it has been and the leader it should always be long into the future. Because we are all Tar Heels. Thank you. On Student Body President. Chris Everett for your remarks.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, Chair, for your remarks. Before hopping to my remarks, I just want to take a few moments to congratulate the newly elected leadership for our board. Chair Pryor, Vice Chair Turner, and Secretary White, as well as the new committee chairs. Very excited to working with you all in each of your new capacities and congratulations. And to the newer folks on the board, I also want to take a second to introduce myself. My name is Christopher Everett and I am the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four Student Body President. To me, real leadership means service and it is my goal to use my time on this board to build a Carolina for everyone. On this note, I want to use my time today to speak about a few different things, but to primarily provide a pulse check as we were quickly moving toward the end of this year. To start, we've had a very busy few weeks since I was last before you all, especially acknowledging the two acts of violence involving guns on our campus in the past few weeks. I just want to say I'm so grateful for the work that this board has already done in implementing prevention plans for such acts of violence. But especially for our first responders who quickly jumped into action for our campus. And still, our hearts and minds are with the family of Dr. Yen and all those impacted by the events. But while I'm grateful for the response that we had, I'm here today to implore you all, including myself, to keep doing more and to continue building a safer campus. I know for myself, my administration has been working on surveying students on their experiences during these events, have been working closely with the Office of the Dean of Students to examine these responses and I hope to have some of those conversations with you all in the coming weeks. But our work doesn't stop at building a safer campus. Because the reality is there are so many other student concerns that really need our voices and really need our attention. And I want to bring some of those before you all today. To the Muslim Student Association, fighting for an appropriate space to practice their faith. How can we support their efforts and expression of religion? To students for Asian American Studies advocating for the space and the ability to see their identities represented in the academic space. How do we build those partnerships with other universities to build a strong academic program centered around Asian American Studies? To students with disabilities, fighting for a more accessible campus. How can we continue to use our voices and our leadership roles to address their growing need for ADA compliance and just general updates to our campus? To graduate students who are just working to be well. How can we support these initiatives and assure these folks the rights to wellness that they truly deserve? To students of color, to queer students and to every single identity and experience represented on our campus. Who are fighting to build and support their communities. How do we support them and their initiatives? And to Tez Walker, who just wants to play the sport that he loves, but has continued to show up in the face of continued injustice. How we build a better world for folks like Tez? This is in no way a comprehensive list of all the problems and issues facing our student body. But these examples have left me with one question. Is this not what civil discourse should be about? Is the melting pot of different cultures and identities and voices and experiences that is Carolina? Not worth the difficult conversations about equity and inclusion on our campus? Because in my view, it is. Carolina has brought together such a wide and diverse array of folks from across this globe. And each of us deserve to have our individual needs met. And I see that as the challenge of civil discourse. How do we have the tough conversations about the different needs and voices on this campus? And work together to ensure that there is an individualized solution for each of the problems that I just mentioned. So I charge you all, the folks in front of me, but more so the folks behind me, with the following. Whenever you come to campus each day, I ask that you see each of us. Every student, every need and every issue in a way that is deserving of your best response. And I promise, Chair Pryor and I did not work together on this. I know that's not always the easiest thing to do and sometimes the path of least resistance might be enticing. But the folks at Carolina deserve the best from each of us every single day that we do this work. And so my pulse check for today is, are you willing to give it every day? I look forward to working with you all to address some of these problems that I've just outlined. I'll continue to fight to build an even better Carolina with you all. All that I am, wherever will be, I hold out ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Student Body Everett. And while we didn't coordinate our remarks, I really appreciate those remarks and you're spot on with that. I'll now recognize Lawrence Lauren Hawkinson, the Graduate and Professional Student Government President for her remarks. Lauren?
Thank you, Chair Pryor. And like Student Body President Everett, we did not coordinate our remarks, but I think you'll see some similarities in what I'm about to say as well. Good morning, everyone. In my first address to the board in May, I outlined my overarching goal of focusing on graduate and professional student wellbeing. And while I was already passionate about this topic, the tragic events we've experienced within the last month. My own personal experiences and conversations with concerned students and faculty alike have demonstrated clearly that graduate students are suffering a mental health crisis. And are in critical need of assistance. Ultimately, the changes that need to be made cannot be accomplished without the help of those of you seated in front of me. And the commitment of campus leadership present. There is substantial literature detailing how extensive this crisis of mental health is, particularly in STEM fields. One study states that graduate students are more than six times as likely to experience depression and anxiety than the general population. Another states that thirty-nine percent of graduate students report moderate to severe depression and forty-one percent report moderate to severe anxiety. I've heard from graduate and professional students who are very grateful for the renewed focus on providing mental health resources, such as additional counseling here on campus. And to draw on my background as a healthcare provider, of course, it is important to treat the symptoms that we see in front of us. However, treating symptoms alone will never address the underlying cause. So why are graduate students at an especially high risk? How can we restructure our current system to better serve the university, the scientific community? And this country who depends on the research that graduate students create? I do not believe there's one singular answer. The well-being of graduate students is a multifaceted issue. To pull a quote from a two thousand and six study, graduate students are particularly vulnerable to pressures related to conducting research and teaching, publishing and finding employment. In addition to stress from the often ambiguous expectations of advisors. And from a two thousand and eight study, work-life balance is hard to attain in a culture where it is frowned upon to leave the research space before the sun goes down. The stress of increased pressure to produce data in order to compete for funding has increased exponentially. One major issue facing graduate students is that contracts of obligations for their degree requirements vary wildly, sometimes even within the same program. Communication and feedback surrounding these expectations also vary. Some students meet with their advisors weekly, while others can't get their advisor to meet with them once a month. Many of these expectations are dependent on the personality and preferences of the advisor. With additional influences stemming from stated aims and outcomes of awarded grants. Expectations placed on said advisor from their supervisors and modeling of ways in which they were mentored as a student. Therefore, advisors can have an oversized influence on the outcome of student graduation as well as student employment upon degree completion. As employers often rely on advisor recommendation letters to assess an applicant's potential. Additionally, I hear from students at Carolina that there are unwritten rules of graduate school within departments. We are told that it is important to have work-life balance and set boundaries and take care of ourselves. But in reality, expectations are the complete opposite. While a contract may say twenty hours, the advisor tells a student to expect forty plus hour work weeks. It's a badge of honor to be the first one in the office in the morning and the last one out at the end of the day. In fact, your work ethic and commitment to your research and the university may be called into question if you do come in later, leave early, or heaven forbid, take a day off for any reason. This judgment comes from peers and supervisors alike. When students encounter problems over the course of their graduate education, they are first instructed to attempt to resolve the issue with the help of their advisor. Some advisors are able to handle disputes and solve issues well. Others are either not willing to or not capable of solving the given issue. Students are then directed to department chairs or program directors. However, faculty relationships are often fraught with complication. And currently, the system is not designed to help students resolve issues. Please do not mistake my words for us blaming advisors for the poor well-being of students. Faculty receives zero required training on mentorship or conflict resolution and gain benefit from students working long hours to produce more research papers. As this helps them secure more grant money for their labs. Advisors are in an impossible situation. They are expected to mentor students as well as incentivize them to be as productive as possible. Additionally, it's wholly unreasonable to place the responsibility of resolving all graduate student issues on advisors who are already overwhelmed by a long list of responsibilities. There are a plethora of reasons for decline, the decline of graduate student mental health. And while there's a lack of support from some, there exists a growing number of faculty who care deeply about student wellbeing and are dedicated to improving the system in which we all exist. It's all too easy to say that the problem is too large to be solved by any change made here. However, I would like to challenge that. I came to Carolina to be pushed out of my comfort zone, to be a part of something larger than myself. And to become a proud alumna of a university that is a leader in this country. I'm extremely encouraged by the conversations I've already had with members of this campus community and university leadership. And I hope you all as trustees will also join in on these conversations. Graduate students are the workhorses of our scientific research programs. Without them, we would have no research programs. They have earned the appreciation of this institution and deserve its support in protecting their rights and their mental health. Individual departments do not have the funds or resources to create real change for grad students. Graduate and professional student wellbeing is a complex, multifaceted issue that will require innovative systemic solutions. This university has the opportunity to demonstrate strong support of graduate students. To forge new standards in graduate student rights, reap the benefits of a healthier student body. And blaze a new path that other schools will follow. Please demonstrate your commitment to your students, not only to them, but to the country and the world. And in doing so, continue our legacy of leadership. I cannot think of any group of innovators and leaders more prepared to meet this challenge than those at Carolina. And I look forward to paving the way forward with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren. And I'm now going to recognize Chancellor Guskowitz for his remarks. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate Lauren, both your remarks and comments. Chris, thank you. Thank you for your leadership and I look forward to continuing to work alongside you to address the challenges that you've addressed today. So thank you. Also want to congratulate Chair Pryor for your election as Board Chair. Also want to welcome new members to the board and I look forward to working alongside you to advance our collective priorities for Carolina. One of those priorities was showcased yesterday as we dedicated our new Innovate Carolina Junction for all of you that were there. That was an exciting moment in our university's history as we had the ribbon cutting ceremony there for an initiative that has really been underway for probably four years. And so it was really great to be there to celebrate that together. This will be a startup accelerator, as you know, a coworking space and a home for entrepreneurs, startups and small businesses. As I said in a message to campus this past week, we want our faculty with their innovative research to partner with entrepreneurs and to bring their ideas quickly to market. This is about amplifying the impact that we can, that we can have to showcase that important work. Since our last meeting, the past two months on campus have been filled with some incredible moments, but also with some difficult challenges that we've already heard today. And so let me start with the highs, as I'd like to call them. This fall, we welcomed the largest class undergraduate class in the history of our great university. Over forty-seven hundred first year students and over nine hundred transfer students for a total of fifty-six hundred undergraduate students joined our community. And over twenty-four hundred new graduate students joined that community. I have a handout that's in front of you that called Meet Carolina's Newest Class and you can see some of the statistics. But these undergraduates came from forty-nine states, plus the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. Ninety-three North Carolina counties and one hundred different countries. Nineteen percent are first in their family to go to college, something we're proud of here at Carolina and committed to. And so there was so much excitement on our campus for the year ahead as we welcomed them to campus on August twenty-first. I enjoyed talking to students out at the Old Well as they lined up down Cameron Avenue for their traditional first sip. And it was taken at our newly accessible Old Well. And I hope that you've been able to see the new sloped walkway that was installed this summer at the Old Well. And I'm going to just say I'm grateful to this board for your commitment to making campus more accessible to all. for your commitment to making campus more accessible to all of our students and all those who want to visit our campus. Second, as you saw last week, U.S. News and World Report rankings moved us up to become the number four public university in the nation. This is a true testament to the incredible work our community does every day. Additionally, and perhaps even more impressive, is that we moved from twenty-ninth overall among all national universities up to twenty-two. It's the largest jump that we've ever experienced. And so, as I said in an op-ed in the News and Observer this week, these gains are fueled by a commitment made long ago. We make the dream of an excellent college education possible. We remain the number one public school for best value, and to me, that may be the most important statistic of all. Third, we're grateful to the General Assembly for their continued support for higher education in last week's budget. Our ranking and commitment to being passionately public could not be possible without the longstanding support of our state legislature. This budget invests in our new infrastructure, provides new opportunities for our students to learn and conduct research, includes funds for raises and retentions of our world-class faculty and staff, and helps our students graduate and give back to our state and to our society. It includes significant and much-needed funding to expand our computer science programs to include applications in data science for our new School of Data Science and Society. This was our top-budget priority as we worked alongside UNC System, the UNC System Office, and our respective legislative liaisons to secure this critical funding. And I want to again thank Amy McConkey and Chris McClure and others who spent a lot of time over in Raleigh over the past several months advocating for this priority. There will be a great return on investment on this funding around computer science and data science as it'll address the workforce demands that North Carolina is currently experiencing as one of the fastest-growing states in the nation, and it will ultimately help drive our state's economy. We also received significant funding for the North Carolinian Laboratory and projects related to water safety, next-generation energy, opioid remediation, artificial intelligence, and digital engineering, and this amazing level of support that the collaboratories receive will enable it to continue its critical mission of disseminating research to state and local governments. One of the, I think, unique features of the collaboratory is that it bridges other system schools and allows us to partner in a more meaningful way with our sister campuses. The budget also includes initial funding to support our efforts to launch the School of Civic Life and Leadership, and Dean White and Provost Clemens will give you an update on this later this morning. And I'm grateful for the progress that we're making with the school. I'm also pleased to share news of progress in our fundraising efforts as well to support civic life and leadership. The Orville Gordon Brown Foundation has pledged one million dollars to establish an endowment for a professorship that will support a faculty member in the new school for a three- to five-year term, and this is a wonderful gift to help build on our commitment to public leadership and civic engagement for our students. Fourth, and I have a handout as well for you in front of you that Vice Chancellor Penny Gordon Larson provided for me in a meeting I had with her earlier this week, that our office of sponsored research led by Penny is moving forward with building a roadmap for their new strategic plan, which will serve to guide the implementation of our larger university plan, Carolina Next. They are currently in the first phase of meeting with stakeholders and drafting strategic goals, and their aim is to build on our over one-point-one-billion-dollar research enterprise, increasing and accelerating growth so that we can become an even larger, have an even larger impact through our research at Carolina. We have a goal of someday saying that we're a two-point-one-billion-dollar research enterprise. So it's going to take a roadmap, a clearly articulated roadmap to do that, and I'm really pleased with the work that Penny and her team have laid out. So that's some of the highlights, and I could go on and on with more, but at the same time, this fall, we've been met with significant challenges. The shooting of Dr. Yen was devastating for our community here at Carolina, along with two lockdowns in a sixteen-day window. We plan for days like these, as I've said many times over the past several weeks, but we hope we never need to activate a plan, but we did. We've been focused on caring for our people and working collectively for everyone to know our safety protocols, to follow our emergency operations plan, and to support one another. We followed best national practices, and I'm proud of the way that our police, emergency teams, and community responded during both of these events. No system is perfect, though. We're conducting a review of the emergency operations to see what we can learn from these two incidents. And to me right now, there are probably three areas that seem particularly important. First is, you know, how do we improve the initial actions that we take to support each other in such a situation? Second, what do we do better to secure our physical spaces? And then third, and perhaps most important, what are the root causes that lead to something like this that we can address as a community? And we're focused on all three of these. We established a portal to hear feedback from people across our campus, from parents, and I look forward to our discussion today reflecting on the events and our preparedness efforts looking forward into the future. We will now hear from Brian James, UNC Police Chief, and Darryl Jeter, Director of Emergency Management Planning. And I just want to start by sharing my heartfelt gratitude to both of them for their incredible leadership during this difficult time on our campus. They prepare continually for events like this, and it showed in the swiftness of their actions. And I've been amazed by their deep knowledge, expertise, and commitment to the safety of our campus. So I'm going to ask them to please come up, and we appreciate all that you've done over these past several weeks and an opportunity to have a conversation this morning, Chief James.
All right. Thank you, Chancellor Guskowitz, Chair Pryor, and the board. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you this morning, and we will talk briefly about the August twenty-eighth incident. We'll also talk about some preparedness, as well as some things that we envision going forward to continually work to make our campus as safe as it can be. So, as the chancellor alluded to, we constantly prepare for events such as what we experienced, and of course, we hope they never happen, but we do have a plan in place. Just to give you a little bit of history, in two thousand and twenty-one, it was actually mandated throughout the state of North Carolina that every law enforcement officer go through a course of responding to school incidents, which covered the basic principles of an active shooter event. In two thousand and twenty-one as well, we conducted a full-scale active shooter exercise between UNC Police as well as UNC Hospital Police. And as we partner with all of our agencies, we, of course, ensure that we closely partner with UNC Hospital Police because of their close proximity right here on campus with us. In two thousand and twenty-two, we went through an emergency operations plan refresher that was conducted by our emergency management team, taught by Mr. Jeter and his team. In two thousand and twenty-two as well, we did a what we call active shooter response in our annual firearms training, sometimes called a combat force, if you will, in our training to ensure that officers are not just working with static targets, but learning how to react on the move in those situations. And I would say something that really benefited us on August twenty-eighth this summer. In June, we did a rapid deployment refresher training with our police officers here at UNC, as well as the hospital police, and we used an empty academic building to simulate an active shooter situation. And we felt like that was very important, and we'll discuss that in just a few minutes as I get into more details about the incident from the twenty-eighth. So just to give you a, just a really quick timeline, the first call was received at twelve fifty-eight P.M. And I want to commend our nine-one-one staff, who sometimes are called the first first responders because they received the phone call. And as they were dispatching us to the location, they were also receiving additional information, which was very helpful. We were dispatched at twelve fifty-nine, and we arrived at one oh one P.M. And that two-minute response time is consistent with our average response time on campus for most calls. At one oh three, we activated the Alert Carolina Emergency Warning sirens are activated. And during that time, of course, as we were going into lockdown, a number of agencies responded to campus, and we will recognize them at the end of this presentation, and some of those agency heads and representatives are here with us this morning. At approximately two thirty-five P.M., the suspect was in custody. There were still additional things that were being done to secure campus after the suspect was initially taken into custody. And at four fourteen P.M., we issued the all-clear and lifted the lockdown. So some of the incident response highlights, again, I want to emphasize that UNC officers responded very quickly, as did our fellow law enforcement partners, and entered the buildings as we had trained. UNC officers also quickly organized and entered into COTL labs and surrounded that building, as well as several adjacent buildings to COTL labs. As we were in our initial response phase, we had a number of agencies that came in and assisted us, as I've talked about previously. And one thing that we are very proud of is that as we were organizing the various agencies, we had teams that were going into buildings and doing various searches. Some of those teams may have had two or three different law enforcement agencies embedded within those teams, but one thing that we saw is that the training, the consistency in training, was very important because those teams worked together seamlessly and were able to secure the campus. During the event, officers conducted constant follow-up during the lockdown and in search of the suspect, as well as follow-up on additional calls on campus, because as you can imagine, and as many of you know, there were a number of calls that were going out in conjunction with the event that we were dealing with. And ultimately, a call from a citizen enabled our partners at the town of Chapel Hill Police Department to apprehend the suspect. And we talk all the time about relationships and how we initially detect and prevent crime. It often starts with a citizen. So in this particular case, it was a conscientious citizen that saw something that was out of the ordinary and placed that phone call and enabled law enforcement to get the suspect in custody. So after apprehension, we received, again, additional calls which required follow-up, and we conducted an extensive search of campus in an attempt to recover the weapon. As we talked about before, the suspect was in custody around two thirty-five P.M. We lifted the lockdown at about four fourteen. During that time, we still had additional calls. In addition to that, and as we've publicized previously, the gun had not been located, and as of this date, has still not been located. So we did a very thorough search of campus to include additional buildings, the building of the incident, as well as the grounds, and we wanted to ensure that we did everything that we possibly could to locate that weapon, especially if it was on campus, before we lifted that lockdown. And I can't emphasize enough that once you lift the lockdown, if there's a reason to go back into lockdown, that's very, very difficult. So we want to be absolutely sure before we lift a lockdown in those situations. So after lockdown was lifted, we maintained a law enforcement presence on campus assisted by UNC officers, as well as many of our law enforcement partners that stayed on campus with us. So a few things that we want to talk about going forward as we look at improvement efforts and how we can better secure campus. First and foremost, many of our law enforcement officers have asked for an exercise, if you will, to come on campus to get more familiar with campus. One thing I can say about Carolina, having been here a year now, when you get here, it's like a maze. And if you don't know it, you just don't know it. But once you do, you do, and so we want to do everything we can to familiarize our partners with the campus because, as you can imagine, as we have so much help coming in and trying to direct people where to go, that can be very challenging. We also want to review camera access and locations on campus to ensure coverage and quick retrieval of video. We just want to ensure that we have cameras in the places that they need to be and try to just prevent or reduce the number of blind spots that we have on campus. We also want to work with campus partners to consolidate our camera systems. We have a number of different camera systems on campus, and we're trying to look at a way that we can consolidate that to more or less simplify access and create quick access. We also want to look at a platform that can integrate all of our technology and provide real-time access. So as we're moving forward, we are in the process of getting license plate readers on campus with Flock, a company called Flock, which a number of our campus partners have. And there are ways to integrate that technology. Our parking enforcement partners, Transportation and Parking, they have technology that they use, as well as cameras that could be plugged in, and there's a way that we could create a real-time environment to help us to better secure campus. We're going to provide ongoing training, which we have done previously, active shooter training, as well as building security surveys. And I can't emphasize enough, as we talk about active shooter training, the building security surveys or the site surveys are equally important because we do have a number of buildings on campus, and as we've talked about before, no building here is the same. And they range in age. I think the Global FedEx Building is about seventeen years old, and we've got buildings that are, you know better than I do, two hundred-plus years old, you know. So we need to, but it's important that the place and the space that you're in, whether it's a residence hall or academic building, that each one of our faculty and staff are familiar with those buildings, and we will send our folks out to help you plan, formulate a plan, and try to shore up any points that need to be enhanced. So we want to also, again, enhance and continue to enhance relationships with campus partners and analyze any potential threats to the UNC campus community. And as we've done previously, we will maintain our partnership with the North Carolina SBI Information Sharing and Analysis Center. One thing that we are proud of, we have an officer that is assigned to that center that constantly looks at any kind of threats to campus. We also look at any events that we're having, and we run those through that center to ensure that, or try to detect anyone that may pose a threat to those various events. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Jeter, and he'll cover his part, and then at the end, we'll recognize some of our partners that responded that day.
Thank you, Chief. Chair Pryor, Chancellor Guskowitz, members of the board, thank you all for this opportunity. The chief has highlighted the response efforts associated with the events on the twenty-eighth. I want to share with you all the emergency coordination activity that support our responders in the field so that as they address the primary needed actions, we're able to support them with all the ancillary matters that also need to have, need to be addressed. And following a similar approach as chief, I want to first begin with just highlighting some of the activities and initiatives that have occurred over the past year as it relates to our Carolina Ready Campus Emergency Preparedness Efforts. Some board members who have previously served on committee over the past year, some of these initiatives are familiar with you as we have briefed you on those. But July of last year, we actually implemented, the chancellor ensured our new emergency management policy, which really set the framework for a lot of the subsequent plans and activities that we'll highlight. We conducted an active shooter training and emergency coordination training with the chancellor's cabinet in September of last year. And we also last year had our inaugural Preparedness Festival in the pit. That theme was a zombie preparedness theme, and that just creates more awareness around preparedness for our campus community. Over the several months between October and July, we have emergency management officials, partners across campus and different departments who have defined roles in our emergency operations plan. We provided standard-level training for those individuals just to make sure that they understood what their respective roles were. And then we also, in December of last year, added to our Carolina Ready website more resources specifically regarding faculty classroom preparedness. And so we launched that website and resources associated with it. One notable is the start of the spring semester. In all of the classrooms across campus, we placed Q.R. codes so that faculty members could quickly scan and access resources specifically to their classrooms and to familiarize themselves with how to act in different situations and what resources and contacts are available to them. And then the last one I'll highlight is in July of this year, our chancellor promulgated our And then the last one I'll highlight is uh, in July of this year, our chancellor promulgated our updated emergency operations plan, which basically is the overarching plan on all hazards of how we as a university would address any kind of an incident or major event that occurs on our campus. So talking about the timeline of the twenty-eighth from the emergency coordination perspective, uh, chief indicated um, their actions and one oh seven, our emergency operations center, we quickly uh, activated. Uh, we convened um, a call with all of our emergency management officials just to provide a briefing of what we understood to be the situation and to begin to anticipate what the needed objectives would be to support their actions while the university was under lockdown. Uh, one of our key roles is supporting any updated messaging between the initial uh, siren alert and the all-clear. And so we had subsequent updates through our Alert Carolina system uh, that was sent out throughout uh, that process or period that the university was on lockdown. I do want to note that in addition to the three that we noted uh, in the timeline, we're also sending out periodic updates uh, approximately every fifteen minutes uh, using social media resources that we have available to us. Uh, the chancellor issued an email out to the campus community uh, as well as we sent out an update to the campus community through Alert Carolina regarding what our operating conditions would be the following day. Um, and then as you're aware, uh, the press conference with Chancellor Guswitz and Chief James was conducted uh, just before six P M. That day. And our activities in the emergency operations center for that day, uh, we were able to suspend those um, uh, shortly before eleven P M. And then we reconvene uh, the next day. So our efforts uh, from the emergency operations center, we were activated uh, from the twenty eighth through the thirty-first. Uh, and that included twenty-seven emergency uh, staff members uh, for the emergency operations center as well as eighteen members that uh, staffed our hotline for the incident. Um, this includes thirteen emergency support functions out of the eighteen that are identified in our emergency operations plan. And we were really focusing on the messaging. And so any updated message through the Alert Carolina system that needed to go out, we wanted to make sure that that content and information was prepared and disseminated in a timely fashion. We also wanted to make sure appropriate documentation and reporting uh, was occurring throughout those subsequent days. And then there was support, uh, critical services that uh, were necessary. Um, uh, obviously counseling, uh, was one that we wanted to make sure was available to our students and our faculty and staff. Individuals or memorial activity, we wanted to make sure that the appropriate resources were in place to support those. And then what our operating status as a university needed to be in those subsequent days so that we can safely uh, and uh, in a thoughtful manner uh, reconvene normal activity on our campus. And of course, the hotline, uh, we were supporting those efforts as well. Also wanted to highlight as it relates to documentation, uh, obviously when the issue occurred, um, chancellor made sure that all of the resources that we had for our emergency operations plan uh, were enacted. And so uh, to formalize that, we have uh, the state of emergency uh, was actually that, that was declared. And in alignment with our policy as well as the system office uh, adverse weather and emergency events policy, uh, this declaration allowed for mutual aid agreements to be implemented and other ordinances and resolutions to quickly be enacted as well as supporting the activation of our emergency operations center. And any restricted asset access that we need to, to put in place for certain buildings that were impacted, uh, that declaration allowed for those measures to be put in place as well, in addition to supporting uh, the condition three requests that went to the system office. I, I did want to provide some very preliminary stats that we were able to pull together. Uh, so we mentioned our incident hotline. And so uh, over the course of the uh, subsequent days that we had that hotline uh, staffed, uh, we received just over two hundred calls from there. And you can see uh, the graph on the left represents uh, the relationship of the caller to the university. About fifty percent of the callers were parents. Uh, and then a quarter of the callers just above that uh, were our students. And then the nature of the call, most of which were uh, concerned parents. And so they were reaching out to voice various concerns uh, regarding the incidents and the well-being of their student. Uh, and then uh, the other category up under the nature uh, were concerns about the response itself. And just wanted to make sure or wanting to have a better understanding of what uh, actions were being taken uh, to uh, regain um, a sense of safety on our campus community. And then the last set of stats that I, I, I thought was uh, worth noting is we do have our Carolina Ready Mobile Safety App that we really encourage all students, faculty, staff, parents uh, and affiliates uh, to download that app. Uh, and we were really pleased to see our campus community's interest uh, and response to make sure that they have access to resources subsequent to this. So we saw over the course of the twenty-two days subsequent to that incident, we saw a forty-five percent increase in downloads of that safety app. And so our campus community certainly wants to be informed that they want to tap into the resources that we have available to them. And we want to applaud our campus community uh, for them partnering with us uh, in that endeavor. Some ongoing review and improvement air um, um, activities on our end, we'll be following stand best practices and standards and some, similar to what chief indicated earlier, we're going to be taking a close analysis of the response activity to make sure that our core capabilities um, uh, exist and are strong and then identify any gaps that may exist there. We'll be looking at our policies and plans to identify any needed improvements to those. And we'll be engaging with our campus community, the chancellor mentioned earlier, the feedback portal that was issued. And that's just one of many efforts. We want to make sure that we have that collaboration to increase awareness around our emergency preparedness message. And then continue to test those plans and capabilities through our trainings um, and our exercises. And with that, I'm going to invite chief to uh, rejoin me as we provide some special acknowledgements. So we wrap up.
All right. Uh, thank you again. Um, these are the agencies and and uh, we have several of the department heads here, of course, uh, U N C Police, U N C Police nine-one-one, Chapel Hill Police, uh, Chief Leehue is here. Uh, welcome, please come up, stand with us. Uh, Sheriff Blackwood, uh, with the Orange County Sheriff's Offices here. Uh, Carboro Police Department, I'm not sure if Chief A-TAC was able to attend. Uh, U N C Hospital Police, North Carolina Central, uh, Chief Williams, Chief Damon Williams from uh, North Carolina Central is here. Uh, N C State uh, responded, North Carolina Highway Patrol, uh, Captain uh, Perry Marshall with Troop D is here. Uh, sir, please come up, stand with us. Uh, North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation is here. Um, I'm not sure if they were able to, to attend. Uh, Federal Bureau uh, of Investigation Special Agent, uh, Stephen Jessup is here with us. Uh, North Carolina A L E, uh, we have Assistant Director Morrow and Special Agent in Charge Jack Cates, North Carolina A L E. Of course, uh, Chapel Hill Fire and Orange County Emergency Services. And uh, and and what I'll say also is that uh, a number of agencies were headed this way uh, from several counties over. And once we felt we had the situation under control, uh, we asked them to, to stand down. Uh, but um, a, a lot of people helped us, uh, not just in law enforcement and and first responders, but on campus. And and I'll say this, it's, it's the little things that really came into play, but I will, I will say this, uh, Mr. James Spurling commandeered a group of uh, of golf carts in the midst of all this, and they were invaluable in helping us to cover the campus. And it's, it's, it's just little things like that. And he would probably hate that I'm even mentioning his name because that's how he is. Uh, but, but those, believe it or not, those golf carts were just right on time and really helped us. So um, I just want to, I, I thank all of you uh, for, for being here, sending your people. So thank you.
And then finally, um, on the coordination side, I did want to also acknowledge those that were supporting us in our emergency operations center. Uh, first and foremost, if you all will indulge me, I do want to recognize uh, the staff of the Office of Emergency Management and Planning, uh, I believe they're in the building. So if you all can stand, please, where you are. Many times I'm the face, I'm the name that you hear and see when it comes to emergency management and planning. But these are the team members that are behind the scenes every day. Making sure our plans are in place, making sure that our training and exercise program is solid and working with our campus partners to make sure we maintain a state of readiness. And I am extremely proud to be a team member working alongside of them. The university is fortunate to have them uh, as a part of our team. So again, thank you all so much. And then I also want to ask our partners who staff the emergency operations center, if you're here, some of which are, if you will, please stand invaluable partners. This is a collaborative effort. And so if you'll help me thank them. And then just to wrap it up, um, I, I, I will say that a, as a campus community, uh, we are resilient. Uh, and and that was demonstrated throughout. I, I was fortunate uh, to be in, in the uh, vigil uh, that uh, university events put on. Um, and that was a moving tribute. Uh, and and I will say Carolina Strong is what we are, is who we are. Thank you for your support, your leadership. Thank you for this opportunity.
I, I just want to thank you again. Uh, I often use the phrase that we're built for this. And uh, we are Carolina Strong and it's because of this community and the way in which uh, we come together to solve a challenge. And uh, Darrell, thank you, chief, thank you. And to all of those, I know uh, it, it takes a village. And so we uh, we, we're, we're going to continue to get better. As I said, there's no perfect uh, response, uh, but uh, we will work toward, toward perfect. So thank you.
To echo uh, the chancellor there and just say that in keeping with the theme that I referenced and he referenced about gratitude and gratitude for everything that you all have done. And I mean, everyone involved for such a horrific event. The response seems to have been the absolute best it could have been. And um, I'd also like to recognize trustee Codis, who was heavily involved in the search effort that gave us Chief James. And I think that we, we have, we have seen what, what happens when you have the best people in the best places. So thank everybody for that. Now, do you want to say something trustee Cod?
Yeah, I was just going to acknowledge uh, the effort of all the law enforcement uh, folks here. And remind everyone in times like this, just a few years ago, we were dealing with calls to defund the police and vilifying police out there. But when there's a tragedy on campus, there's only a few people in this room that are running towards the uh, the shooter, not away from it. And we have to make sure that we give them all the tools that they need to be protected, whether that's cameras, a live response system, floor plans, uh, cars, make sure they can get to the uh, to the space, educational opportunities and personnel. And um, I know that this board is fully committed and this administration is fully committed to supporting those efforts. And so to the extent there's anything that we need, we want to make sure uh, we provide that. So know that you have our, our full support for that. Um, you know, I, I do want to, you know, tackle one thing. When we talk about defund the police that's occurred out there, we've seen just art, we talk about town and gown. We have seen our neighbor uh, Chapel Hill uh, reduce police positions. I think they reduced fifteen from uh, twenty to twenty-one, and that is unacceptable. And we have to hold them accountable. Uh, we, we've heard reports that the prior administration, not the current administration, but the prior administration uh, redirected funds that were to go to uh, the police as well. So um, I just want to make sure that while we have this focus, that we follow up on that and make sure that this is a priority because I think all the parents out there would tell you the one thing they care about is if their child is safe. I know that's what I care about. My son off at school. It's the first thing. And I know all the other parents around here with kids think about that too. So that has to be our number one priority. So to the extent, again, any resources are needed, um, I think you have our full board commitment and administrative commitment uh, for that.
Yes, uh, former chair Bullock.
Yeah, as um, and Chief James, thanks. And uh, Director Jeter, thanks for your presentation. A- as somebody who was actually here on campus that day, I had actually pulled up to the chancellor's office, I think at about one o'clock, right at one o'clock uh, when the incident was, was going on. And, and I, I can say this from having been there uh, during the deployment and, 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 and being there with the chancellor and getting the update calls uh, from Vice Chancellor Battle, who um, was, I know, key with the, with that's your group. And, and I, I, I want to commend you for your work as well. Um, the, the, the professionalism, the response, the preparedness. Uh, I, I just, I can't tell you how, how proud I was to be um, uh, associated with this university and, and, and having had uh, your team come present to the board uh, almost a, a, close to a year before this, a, a, a year ahead of time to let us know uh, what your level of preparedness was and what your commitment was to uh, uh, these incidents and the possibility of something like that happened was, was really, really, really impressive. And, and, and in fact, it, it came front of mind. And, and the chancellor was right there. Um, uh, also, uh, you know, helping to coordinate and and getting updates. But, but boots on the ground was, was, was really important. And, and I, 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 I don't know that it could have been done any better. Um, uh, given, and I appreciate the, the, the efforts of improvement. I mean, I think you can always look at something and and try to find ways to improve. But I think given the circumstances, it couldn't have been done any better. I had a front row seat and, and so I can, I can vouch for the fact that at least in my experience and what I observed, uh, you guys, uh, the whole team and the whole campus really did a fantastic job. So I want to personally thank you.
Anybody else have anything else for the chief and Mr. Jeter? Other than to express our deep, deep appreciation and gratitude?
Yeah, if I could, I, I would, trustee Jones. I mean, as a parent with two students here, um, one of whom was on campus. Uh, again, I mean echoing previous, you know, just uh, gratitude for the service that y'all provide to our students. Um, I, I think it's also important to recognize that our faculty and how they responded, our students. Um, one lady in particular, Octavia Hardy, who works down at Alpine Bagel. And if anybody has ever had a chance to go and speak with her, I encourage you to do it. She is a true steel magnolia. Um, and then you know, the, the way that the Carolina community responded, um, really made me proud to be at Tar Heel. The way that the community came together to support one another. Um, it just, it just made me proud to be at Tar Heel.
Chancellor?
If I could, I do, I do want to uh, in echoing uh, uh, trustee Bullock's um, comment regarding George Battle, Vice Chancellor George Battle. George, could you please stand and Derek Kemp, please stand? Because you helped to coordinate this effort too. So you deserve a round of applause. Thank you.
And um, and last item, we, we, we also will uh, welcome uh, to the board, uh, new members of our cabinet. And we have uh, joining us for the first time officially uh, at a trustee meeting, uh, Veronica Flashpolar. Veronica, please stand. And she's our new president of the General Alumni Association. Joined us in July. Thank you. And I, I saw Veronica uh, last week and look forward to uh, spending some time with her and uh, and Dana Simpson. Okay, we're now going to uh, move on and I'm going to recognize uh, former chair Bullock to give the report on the Budget, Finance and Infrastructure Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Pryor, uh, and board of trustees members. This report covers items discussed during the Committee on Budget, Finance and Infrastructure at our meeting yesterday uh, September twenty-seventh. Committee considered and approved one request for advanced planning spending authority, one request for construction manager at-risk approval, six designer selections, one designer approval request and one land sale. Uh, detailed information about each of these requests remains available in the board effect. Uh, we went over those items uh, in uh, in our committee meeting and those items were approved this morning on the consent agenda. Committee also heard a finance update from Vice Chancellor uh, Knufman and Associate Vice Chancellor Gordon Merk.
Committee also heard a finance update from Vice Chancellor Knufman and Associate Vice Chancellor Gordon Merkline. Committee also heard a presentation on a return on investment study from Andrew Kelly at the System Office. He's the Senior Vice President for Strategy and Policy. And finally, the committee heard information from John King on the investment fund performance over at UNC Management Company. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my remarks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll now recognize Secretary White to give the report on the External Relations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Pryor and Board of Trustees members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on External Relations yesterday, September 27. The committee received a legislative update from Amy McConkey, Director of State Affairs, and Kelly Docum, Director of Federal Affairs. Finally, the committee received a development update from Vice Chancellor for Development, Michael Andreessen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you, Secretary White. And before we go into closed session in a few minutes, I wanted to return to business from yesterday's meeting of the University Affairs Committee that we were not able to finish, given time restraints and getting over to the new innovation hub. At the time I moved and the committee voted that the informational update on the School of Civic Life and Leadership be heard today in full board open session. So Provost Clemens and Dean White are here to present this item to the board now. So Provost Clemens.
Thank you, Chair Pryor. Everyone should know Chair Pryor made it clear the only Shakespeare he wants to hear today is Polonius. Brevity is the soul of wit. I will be brief. I want to, I want to back up a little, though, and give you some history before I introduce Dean White. There has been for some time a broad consensus in society and on campus and among our leadership that our discourse in this nation is imperiled and perhaps even broken. I will credit Kevin Guskowitz, then Dean Guskowitz, for having the foresight to then put together a committee that looked into forming what became the Program for Public Discourse. And I believe trustee Brian served on that committee back in 2019 with Cornell West and Robbie George. Subsequently, we made the Program for Public Discourse. It's been a great success. But but Kevin did not stop there. He, in fact, put into a new curriculum, an ideas and action curriculum, a capacity based curriculum, some requirements in a Communication Beyond Carolina component that we teach our students the skills of discourse, which are fundamental to democracy. And even further in the university strategic plan, democracy and teaching our students about civics and civil discourse figures very prominently. The board endorsed all of that with a resolution to form this School of Civic Life and Leadership in January. And in the interest of shared government, following the prescription of that resolution, that the school perhaps be nested within an existing school. Later that year, sort of this year, sort of May, I turned the visioning for that school over to Jim White in the college. And he's here to tell you the activity that was pursued, starting in about April or May in the college. And I want you to hear from him. And then I'll come back and talk about the go forward plan. So Jim White, Dean of the College of Arts and Sciences.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today about this School of Civic Life and Leadership and the progress that we've made. As Provost mentioned, in mid-June, he tasked me to put together a committee to make a recommendation on how we should proceed for a school civic life and leadership within the college. We provided him our report in mid-June. Took us about a month to put that together. He approved that report. And after that, we formed an implementation committee of six faculty who were tasked with implementing the recommendations that were in the report to the provost, which I believe is available to you. And after speaking with trustee Jones yesterday, I recognize that you are perhaps not getting all of the the public announcements that we make about this. And so I want to apologize for that. And we will repair that and we will make that happen going forward. The we put out a call for faculty interest in forming the core faculty for the School of Civic Life and Leadership. It had a deadline of August 31. We needed to have that deadline in order to have faculty on campus and able to do, able to apply. Also, the implementation committee interviewed all of those faculty who expressed an interest, all those who were nominated and self nominated. After that, the committee gave to Senior Associate Dean Elizabeth Engelhardt and I a, in mid-September, a list of faculty that they recommended that we speak with. And for the last two weeks, Senior Associate Dean Engelhardt and I have been speaking with those faculty. We will finish up today with that process. We hope that sometime later next week to have the faculty identified, it will take us a little bit to inform them and to then inform all of the the important, the parties that need to be informed before this goes public. But we hope very soon to be announcing the inaugural faculty. They will be tasked with some important activities. They will be tasked with providing a faculty vision for the School of Civic Life and Leadership. We have we all have a vision for it, and we've all been feeding them information. We will continue to feed them information. But in the end, it's up to the faculty to to really codify that. We are also asking them to hit the ground running with a new leader for the for the school to get that ad out and to get that out in as expeditiously as possible. And finally, they will also be tasked with the initial thoughts on the curriculum for the school. So that is the that's the purview of the faculty, and we are asking them to take that on. So we're going to be asking them to do a lot in the coming semester. They've already got a full time job. So I appreciate their willingness to to jump in and do this. On a personal note, I would just like to say that having interviewed many, many faculty now for these positions, I want to say how proud I am of the faculty and their willingness to step up and the quality of the faculty and the number of the faculty. I've been very heartened by their response to this and their willingness to take on what is frankly, a difficult task and one in which we are, we're doing as rapidly as we can, but as best as we can. So thank you. And I will now turn it back over to the provost.
Thank you. For your interest, I have copies of the report I received on the 13th of June. It's on the web and has been since that day. I want to refer a little bit to this report because it does describe the vision of the initial ad hoc faculty group that consisted of faculty in the college, including some who were originally involved in the Program for Public Discourse as it was founded. One of the things they say about the vision for the school, as a starting place, the vision for skill can provide a home specifically for the study and practice of public discourse, civic life and civic leadership. Providing a grounding in the American political experience and democracy, skill can serve to convene, gather and support such conversations and research. I think that's a pretty good description, summary of where the faculty want to take this. I will tell you, some of these faculty have been waiting for this and are very enthusiastic about it. There are, there are four elements to their vision. I won't get into them unless you have questions. They're summarized in a in a diagram. I think Jim has told you our progress, the next steps will be to convene a search committee from among the faculty selected and to put out an advertisement for a director and dean who will then lead the program. We will do that as quickly as process allows shooting for late next week to have the paperwork ready to go to HR. I'll stop and let you take questions for me or for Dean White.
And thank you very much for that, Provost Clemens. I'll just say that as you've gotten a sense from the board, we all have a shared desire to see Carolina lead. And on this, we have led. And there are obviously peer institutions around the country that have paid attention to what we're doing, some that have already started, some that have started since and others that are continuing to start creating a greater urgency for a talent pool out there. So I would just underscore the degree to which you can move quicker than usual for the comfort zone. And we can continue to lead in a way that will hopefully be an inspiration for those in the General Assembly that would like to see it move fast.
Thank you, Chair Pryor. I will, I will reinforce that in my charge. I will tell them per Kipling to fill each unforgiving minute with 60 seconds worth of distance run.
Okay. That's one of my favorite. That was not scripted, but that's one of my favorites there from Kipling. Okay, other questions? Trustee CODIS.
Just wanted to clarify that this this will be a school and therefore we're looking for the dean for the School of Civic Life and Leadership, not a department. And and then we've got the potential for an interim dean, I guess, or dean in relatively short order. So depending upon how long a search would take, you could possibly have an option for that as well.
Right. The plan is the school will be nested in the School of Arts and Sciences, but it will be a school with the title Director and Dean for the leader. We will open a search. If we do not get a candidate we're happy with, we can name an interim dean to organize the activity while we complete that search. We will, of course, do everything in our power to do this quickly. It is our hope, and we're aware of candidates who are interested, that candidates will appear and and the faculty will vet them and and want them to come lead. But we can never guarantee, of course, what happens when we open a search in terms of the candidates. So we do have the option to name an interim.
One follow up. I appreciate all the efforts for the the joint appointment. That's low hanging fruit kind of in the within the university already, kind of the easiest to slot in. There's also a call, of course, for folks outside of the university as well. And could you give us an update on that? That process or when that will start?
Sure. Let me be clear that the faculty coming in joint will not have this school as their tenure home initially. So then to the first hire that will have a tenure home in the school will be the director and dean. And I think for the external hires, you'd like to have that person in place. And so that timing will be, I think, regulated by the search itself. Every new school, part of their aspiration is to hire great external scholars to come in and join us here. And I think this will be no different. So.
Um, thank you, Chair Pryor and Provost Clemens and Dean White. Thank you for your leadership in putting this school together. Jim, I really appreciated the conversation that you and I had yesterday. You know, just speaking in broad terms, there are a lot of people that are watching the development of the school, people within the within the university, people within the state, people around the country. And I'm a little concerned about some hardening of lines and regarding the development of the school. And I just would like to kind of break that frame. So if someone is a proponent of skill, that doesn't mean that they're anti-faculty. And if someone is on the faculty and they're asking questions about skill and how it's developed, that doesn't mean that they're at they're against the school. I think the the common thread is that we all want a school that will be a national leader that we can all be proud of. And I think that that's, that's what the ultimate goal for us should be. To the to the faculty that are skeptical about the intent or casting aspersions about why the school is being developed, I would encourage you to get involved, get involved with the development of the program and the development of the school so that this ends up being something that you also are proud of and feel invested in. To that end, Dean White, with your updates, you know, rumors about intent and whatnot kind of fester in the dark. So I think that the more updates that you can give and the more broadly that those are broadcast out to people around the around Carolina and around the state, maybe not too much of the secrets also that, you know, we don't end up spilling our guts out to competitors that are looking to do something similar. But, um, you know, just make sure that people are aware of what's going on. I think that'll that'll go a long way. So thank you.
I thank you, trustee Jones. I'd like to ask in return that when we develop this ad, we are going to want to circulate it broadly that the board help us make sure the ad gets to all relevant academic institutions and any contacts you may have, because we want this to be the broadest possible search for the best possible candidate.
Trustee Bullock.
Yeah, real quick, echo what Chair Pryor and what trustee Jones said, you know, in my conversations over the last several months with alums and and people at the university, the the phrase game changer is what comes up the most. That this school has the opportunity and that UNC Chapel Hill has the opportunity to be a game changer and that this could have a long lasting influential effect on not only UNC Chapel Hill and the state of North Carolina, but the academy broadly across the nation. Because ultimately, universities are tasked with answering the issues of the day. And discourse and how we deal with each other on important issues of the day is directly related to the mission of the university. So I want to thank you for your leadership on this and thank all the board members on this board for their leadership in in making this a reality. We look forward to what's next.
Thank you, trustee Bullock.
Anybody have anything else for the provost? Thank you very much, Provost Clemens and Dean White. And real quickly, before we go into closed session, I'm going to entertain a motion. But first, I want to recognize Vice Chair Turner and Secretary White for agreeing to serve in these capacities. Secretary Turner, who has got a long commute to Chapel Hill now, but very much appreciate you all's willingness to do that. And I have a little token of my appreciation. I'm going to give you here in a minute. But this concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Trustee White.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143 31811 A1 to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information and also pursuant to Section 143 31811 A2, A3, A5, A6, A7, and A9.
Thank you, trustee White. You've heard the motion. Do I have a second? Trustee CODIS, thank you. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going into closed session. We're going to take five minutes. Okay, we are, we're going to wrap this up here. We're now back in open session. I'm going to recognize trustee Jones for an open session report of the University Affairs Committee. Trustee Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Pryor and Board of Trustees members. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on University Affairs yesterday, September 27. In open session yesterday, the committee considered and approved revised faculty salary ranges for the College of for the College of Arts and Sciences, as well as approved revisions to the policy on non-salary and deferred compensation. These items were approved by the board as part of its consent agenda this morning. We also heard an update on fall 2023 registration from Rachel Feldman, Vice Provost for Enrollment, and Kate Hen, Senior Associate Dean and Interim Vice Provost for Business Operation. This committee did not meet in closed session meeting yesterday in the full board's closed session.
In the full board's closed session today, we discussed requested personnel action items, including ten conferrals of tenure and eight new appointments conferring tenure. The conferrals of tenure promotions and appointments require a vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including ten conferrals of tenure and eight new appointments conferring tenure.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, Chair Bullock. Can I get a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Turner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. One last item of business. Vice Chancellor McGinnis is going to be providing all the board members some online Title Nine, Title Nine training, which is coming your way. So be on the lookout for the Title Nine email. That concludes our business today. Without objection, we are adjourned.